Ladies and gentlemen, Blue Death Production proudly presents.
Hey, good afternoon at AFL Central. We're kicking off our September Town Hall. I've got a variety of topics today and a bunch of guest speakers. We'll be covering a little bit about upcoming things with federal tax withholding and some things that may be changing in your paycheck here for the next few months. We've got a quick update on COVID in the base and how things are moving out in town, how things are moving locally inside the fence line. We'll talk about some upcoming training drills that we've got scheduled as well as some upcoming construction that may impact how you're moving around the base. And then we're going to talk about looking ahead to the upcoming holiday season. But our first guest speaker is our school liaison officer. And I'm going to introduce Shannon and have her kind of tell you a little bit about the school liaison program for those families as we kick off the school year. So Shannon, thanks for joining us virtually. I appreciate you dialing in with us and over to you ma'am.
Well, good morning. Thank you so much for having me. So I'm actually located in Naval Bay, San Diego, and I have been a school liaison officer for over 11 years. And the primary goal of the school liaison officer is to link the military families, the communities, and the installations. So what we do is we can advise and we can answer any question that a military family might have regarding preschool through 12th grade. One of the other services that we have is we can help them navigate special education navigation. When we do that, we talk about what is that process? What are the families looking for when they go in and they might want their child to be assessed for special education in the school district? And how do you navigate that? We cannot be advocates. We can't be liaisons. And so we want those families to become their advocates so that they know how to answer those questions and get those answers for their families, okay? The other thing that we can do is we have a system called Partnerships in Education. So that's when we have sailors go out to individual school sites and we might help a school with mentoring or tutoring or something like that. We cannot do maintenance for our school sites. We can't do anything that would be under the curvy of their maintenance department. The school districts are responsible for maintaining their own campuses. One of the other things that we do is post-secondary navigation. So we have a long list of scholarships that are available for students. If they want to apply for scholarships or want to find out about post-secondary opportunities, we can talk to them about that as well. But the primary one is that link between the installations, those military families and the school districts, especially during this time of COVID-19 and distance learning. We have a lot of questions coming from our military families. And so we are here to help them navigate that and to get those support from those children.
So Shannon has a tremendous training program online already. And we've got some material that we're going to be posting and making available to families on how exactly the liaison element works, answering some of the basic questions you may have as you're navigating this challenging time. And Ms. Katrina over at CYP is a primary conduit if you have any specific questions or Shannon. A couple of key points she mentioned there. One, we kind of restrict what we can do as far as maintenance. We're there to advise. The families have to make informed decisions. The families, you have to make all the decisions on what's best for your situation. She's not going to advocate one way or the other. She's just going to provide you the information to help you arrive at what's best for your family. One thing I want to toss to you Shannon for your thoughts on as families are struggling with in-home schooling challenges or homeschooling versus sending their children out into the school environment out in town. Do you have any advice on things they should be researching that help frame up what's important and what they would need to research to be able to understand what the schools can and can't do?
So regarding homeschooling, I do have a packet that I can send you and Dennis and Katrina regarding your homeschooling options, okay? Homeschooling, there's different ways to homeschool. You could go onto the state's California Education website and sign up a dated and that parent would then be the administrator and be responsible for the curriculum and the attendance and everything under that homeschool option that they chose to. The other way is to do an independent study program where you, the parent would go to a school site or a facility, pick up their curriculum compound, and then administer that curriculum to their child. And then they would go back to that facility and do assessments and testing that way. Regarding if the family is having trouble through the distance learning right now, there's two things. There's synchronous learning time and then there's asynchronous learning time. Synchronous learning time is when the teacher is actively online with the students and the classroom, okay? They're going to see their other classmates during that time as well. When it's asynchronous time, that's when the student is doing independent work, okay? The teacher might have a lesson that they want them to do or go onto a website and do some kind of math problem or reading or something like that. When it's asynchronous time, that is a perfect opportunity for parents to send an email, to schedule a meeting with that classroom teacher and discuss what's going on with their child to get some more support and additional resources for them. I have talked to several teachers and administrators and they are trying as best as they can to accommodate every student and to get all of those questions. But one of the things that I want to kind of stress is that the school districts have gone through training over the summer to support through the distance learning model. But sometimes what has happened is the parents are not also getting that training. So going back to that school site and saying, okay, this is the terminology that you're using, but I'm not understanding it. So what do I need to do at my home to understand this that I can help support my child? And during asynchronous time, that's a perfect opportunity to schedule a meeting with a teacher.
Thank you very much. So a lot of challenging situations out there. The school districts are doing the best they can to deal with what evolution in education is brought out by COVID. We're going to provide a whole bunch of references to help you navigate this as best you can and do what's best for your family. Important to remember that if you do elect to do homeschooling, there is a structure that needs to be complied with to meet the kind of state guidelines on that. And we'll make sure you've got all that reference material available. Shannon, thank you very much for joining us today. I appreciate you joining our Town Hall virtually and I wish you the best.
Well, thank you so much for having me. I look forward to helping you further.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we're going to be joined by ABHC Medina. He's our Command Financial Specialist and he'll talk a little bit about tax deferral. Chief, welcome to the group. So how are you this morning?
Good, sir. How you doing?
Good.
So essentially this, it was a presidential memorandum. There was an issue out for the social security payroll tax deferral we hold in. And then this applies for all the DOD, which is like military and civilian as well. So this only will be affected if your monthly rate base pay for the military personnel will be $8,666. And for the civilian will be $4,000 or less, right? So essentially this is equal to 6.2% for that one. The deferred timeframe, it would take, it already took effect September 12th for the civilian and September 15th for the military and personnel. So the timeframe for this one, it will be taken out from September, October, November, December 2020. They will collect that money back on January 21st, February, March, and April. So that essentially will be the timeframe for the collection timeframe for the money that they'd be issuing out.
Yeah, so in essence, your FICA, your federal income tax is being kind of withheld. So it's given back to you. You're not going to pay that tax for the first few months. And then you're going to pay double that in the first quarter of next year is how the government's rolling that out. So just like all of us in uniform have been overpaid on PCS travels before, you know you've been overpaid and you have to hold on to that money because you know the government's going to come get it, same kind of situation applies here. You know the government's going to come get it, so don't spend that money or just be prepared. Put yourself in a position where you're not getting in extremis when it comes time to repay that.
Yes, sir.
What other thoughts do we have on, do you know why is this being implemented?
So it's being implemented to provide relief during the COVID-19 pandemic, okay? So essentially, a lot of people had struggled financially. So this is another way to kind of stimulus, you know, the economy and help others since we are essentially in a position, in a bad position for financially, okay? So, but that, exactly what you're saying is in another word would be, it's like having a loan against your own money.
Yeah.
So it's good to know the amount, for example, you can calculate it really easy. They say every first on the 15, you receive a $1,500 paycheck, okay? And then you see an increase of that one. So you want to subtract that one into your last paycheck, for example. And so you kind of know what would be your 62% and you want to put that money away. That way, when it comes time to the collection, you're not struggling in a sense and you have that money.
Yeah, it's intended to help you out near term, but the collection's going to happen. So don't put yourself in a bad situation there. You've got to plan this out. Can you opt out of this? Can you say, no, thanks. I don't want to participate in this particular program?
No, sir. Of which we had that option, but we not had that option. This is a direct, pretty much a presidential memorandum that goes to all the DOD. You cannot opt out after that one. And then there is IRS guidance for that too as well, sir.
Yeah, and it does apply to both military and civilian if you caught that. So the pay period's a little bit different based on how we get paid. But, and it's not everyone. It's a certain threshold. They capped it out. Chief's broadcast the number. We'll put out that training material separately. So, but it's a vast majority of both our civilian and military force. This is going to apply to almost everybody watching us.
All the DOD, yes.
Yeah. And you talked when it begins. So tax can only be really controlled by Congress. Is this going to be deferred and not have to be paid back? What do we know right now about what Congress intentions are?
As we stand right now, sir, the Congress has not made the determination yet. So essentially, we have to plan for the IRS. We're taking that money back.
Yeah, I agree.
Unless we receive anything from them directly to us, otherwise we need to plan for that.
Yep. Right now, we have no indication that Congress is moving that direction. And if that changes, then we'll update you on what that's going to be. But right now, okay, anything else on this topic?
That should be everything on, you know, the short suite. We send out this to the all hands, all this material and all this information for everybody having. If you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'm the Command Financial Specialist. I work in the air operation, building 139.
Okay, super chief. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Okay, next we've got coming up, our Installation Training Officer and our Public Works Officer. And since we're going to be sitting kind of close, I am going to put my mask back on for this one. Just a quick update on what's going on on the base that may be impacting you as you move around and some different training programs, just so you're aware of what we're doing that may impact you. Manny, Derek, welcome. So we'll start off with training. What have we got on the plate over the next kind of month that folks may see an impact of how they move around the base?
Yes, sir. So we're going to have a couple of exercises. I'm just going to go over some notes that I wrote down just to make sure that NAFAC is aware of what we've got going on.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'm Manny Peralta, in case you guys don't know me. I'm the Installation Training Officer, as the skipper mentioned. Drills and exercises. So be aware that the installation will begin conducting night exercises. Something that we haven't done, but the reason, you know, you might ask yourself why. Most of the incidents that occur on installations happen after hours. They normally happen when, you know, everybody's gone. So we want to make sure that we train how we fight. That is actually the moniker I have on my card. And that's basically what we want to do in the installation. We want to get our guys, our first responders, to train the way they would respond. And it's not just for us and not just for the first responders, but it's for you as well, because when they protect the base, they're protecting you and your family, especially if you live on the base. When is that going to occur? Well, our first night event will take place tomorrow. It's going to be between the hours of 1800 and 2200, somewhere in there is going to be the exercise. So where? Affected areas are going to be the ECP. So just so you know, there's likely that you're probably going to be directed over to, if you leave the installation, you try to come back between the hours of 1830 and 2200, very likely you're going to be diverted to Gate 1 Delta. That is the gate just a little bit east of the front gate. So very likely the front gate is going to close so that they can do their exercises safely. And that way, you guys can come in through Gate 1 Delta. So just so you know, that's basically what's going to happen. So plan accordingly between the hours of 1830, 2200, the front gate may be closed. So just so you're aware. Upcoming exercises, okay? So one of the things that we're trying to do, the skipper, myself, or the training team are trying to take the exercises into more of a dynamic type of exercise. We want to get more than just the first responders involved. So some of the, when we do active shooter and other exercises, we're going to be looking for more of the installation to be involved. You know, just as an example, let's say we go into active shooter, we want to make sure, and I know the CYP already does it, you know, they go in, they shut their, they close their shutters, they close their doors, the lights are off, and you know, they pretend as if we were, you know, they simulate an active shooter. But we want to make sure that not just they are doing that, but everybody on the installation does that. So we're going to be moving into more of a dynamic type of exercise where we're getting everybody else involved so that if something were to happen, God forbid, everybody is ready to handle it.
Yeah, and that's important. That's not just for our certification. That's important for us to be able to respond any day if any situation were to happen that everybody on the base knows what to do to protect themselves, to protect their family. So we'll do that periodically. We'll let you know well in advance which ones are going to be full base participation, which ones are going to be scaled down to just the training elements. But that's kind of my perspective on making sure everybody's ready to handle any situation.
Yes, sir. So you know, when we do have these exercises, we will have the areas that are going to be affected in case you don't hear it or it doesn't get promulgated. And we will try to promulgate ahead of time, make sure everybody is aware. But if you didn't get the word, you know, we will have exercise signs or we cones. And sometimes we'll be have people out there, you know, directing you to stay away from that area. The last plug that I want to make is for the giant voice. Everything that we, you know, a lot of things, exercises, emergencies that we try to do, they go out through the giant voice. I know it's annoying. A lot of people just ignore it, but that is our emergency voice on the installation. So train yourself to just listen out to it, you know, when you hear that audible beep before it goes off, just listen up to make sure it's not a real world exercise. You never know if it's going to be a real world, I mean, a real world incident or an actual exercise. So just train yourself to listen to that beep. When you hear it, just pay attention, listen to what it is. And then once you hear that's an exercise or something, if it's an exercise, it's going to tell you what areas to avoid. And if it's a real thing, well, it's going to give you some directions on what you need to do. So with that, that's all I have, skipper.
So is there any other way besides the giant voice that we get the word out to people as the situation's evolving or changing routes that they need to go? How else would we get the word out?
Yes, sir. So there's also the AT Hawk system. If you guys are not already registered into the AT Hawk, I know we've covered this in the last Town Hall. There was a couple of people asking questions, what it was and how you can get on it. You can just contact, have your supervisor or yourself, you contact the Emergency Manager Officer, Mr. Al Davis, and he can get you into the system and put your phone number in there. And that is also the other way in which you would get the notifications of something going, you know, happening like an exercise or a real world event. It would come out through AT Hawk and you'd get it straight on your cell phone. If you're somewhere where you need to know that you need to hide or duck or shelter in place, you would know that immediately because it gets texted right to your phone.
Yeah, and I recommend you have not just your work phone, but a personal number for notification so that if you're not at your desk, you can still get updated if you're, if you live on base or even if you live in town, you're getting that information pushed to you in a manner that helps you make an informed decision about safety. So strongly recommend everybody get on AT Hawk. All right, thanks Manny. That covers training. Derek, let's talk about construction. What do we got going on the base that folks need to know about?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of items that are, for the folks at large. 4016, we've got some chiller repairs going on. It should be pretty seamless. But if there's any outages or impacts to folks that are birthing and the building's affected, we'll make sure to get that word out to those folks.
And for those not familiar, 4016 is our barracks, one of our many barracks that folks live in.
It affects the unaccompanied housing and transient birthing. And we do have some boiler repairs, replacement of boilers that will also affect those buildings in the future. It hasn't started yet, but we just awarded that project and we'll make sure to get the word out as I said, if there's any outages that will impact the tenants. The other big one we got going on next week is the closure of the Nex and Commissary Parking Lot. The main parking lot will be closed, be repaved, and they'll start Tuesday next week and then will last about a month. So I'm working with PAO to get word out to everyone on Facebook and throughout all hands to make sure people are aware of that. And then the available parking in the meantime will be on the north side behind the Nex and you'll be able to access the Nex and Commissary through the breezeway there. Also, Take 5 is opening up next week and they're going to have some curbside parking available in that north parking lot as well.
Yeah, so for the near term, if you're going to the NEX Commissary Take 5 Single Sailor Facility, park on the north side, which is the backside for about a month. But you've got access to everything you need to get to. I just ask you, please don't break those boundaries. Don't take shopping carts through the brand new pavement and ruin the work they're going to do. I've seen that kind of stuff before. So I ask you to work with us as we make that improvement to that area. And then for folks like Mr. Peralta who ride their motorcycles, what's kind of the unique thing happening at the back end of this project?
So part of the parking lot will also be a motorcycle safety course painted on, so you might see some different lines there other than your regular parking.
Yeah, so we're going to get that restripped the way it is now to continue that training program when that comes back online after COVID. Okay, super. Our new Public Works Officer, Lieutenant Commander Hall, joining us. And thanks Derek for the update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you Manny.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, next on deck, Doc Bologna is going to come talk about what's going on in COVID and kind of some best practices that we've seen, that the CDC has been publishing. And then maybe some things that we need to kind of watch out for individually that we maybe started to let lapse as we've been in this for about six months now. So Nick, welcome. Good to see you again. Nick and I talk daily about COVID. It's a wonderful topic. And we're staying six feet apart, so I'll go ahead and de-math so that you can hear me. Sir, what's going on out in town?
Yes, sir. I'll grab the mic at the direction of CMT just so we're...
Check, sound check. We make adjustments on the fly. As a flight suit wearing member, this gets really easy too. You just clip it on there and you move on.
That's the idea, right?
Yeah.
The COVID situation in town and best practices going forward as policy changes, things open up, things along those lines. The COVID burden is improving locally in town and in the San Diego and Southern California area, actually all the way across the state. And so as those, as the burden improves, restrictions are getting lifted and the more high-risk scenarios and opportunities for people in town are coming back to life. And so with that, personal prevention measures become even more important than before. And those are the same things that we've been talking about for quite some time, but it's always worth a review. The data on the virus is changing. We're learning more things. And for the most part, the restrictions and guidance on personal infection prevention measures have stayed the same.
And if I could jump in, I think that bears out with how well we've done on the base because we do our daily checks, we do our temperature screen, we do our distancing, we do our masks, we sanitize the high contact surfaces, we sanitize our hands frequently, we avoid touching our face. You do those things and the base has stayed nearly COVID-free throughout, even while the local community has been challenged by the numbers and the burden. So those things are effective and I ask you to keep doing those.
Yes, sir. So you alluded to several of those. First is distance. And the numbers to remember are greater than six feet for over 15 minutes. Anything under 15 minutes and within six feet is increased risk for transmission. Masks protect against that. We talk with a lot of our personnel on base about the utility of masks and what they're actually preventing. It's larger droplet transmission. So with you and I speaking like this, sir, we're not emitting too many large respiratory droplets. Someone that coughs or sneezes certainly is transmitting those in the air. Most of those fall to the ground within six feet and that's where that number comes from. 99.4% was the number dropped to me from infectious disease out of San Diego. And that's, that means 99.4% of the respiratory droplets will fall to the ground within six feet.
Sounds like my laundry detergent.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so that covers a lot of it. And the masks certainly provide an additional barrier. The other part is touching your face. When we first were exposed to coronavirus, jokes going around on, man, how often do I touch my face? And we've all realized how frequently that happens. Virus transmission, droplet transmission for the virus is usually transmission through the mucus membranes of your body, which is your eyes, your nose, your mouth cavity, and your respiratory tract. If you can avoid contacting those areas or inhaling respiratory droplets, your avenue to, or your, the way you contract infection is virtually eliminated. So if we're not getting close with others, we're not touching our face, or if we are, we're sanitizing before and after, the likelihood of transmission is very low. And we've seen that on base with no lateral transmission from those few cases that we've had here. And of the 30, 35 cases that I've been involved with, whether it be guidance or management, one or two of them have not had an obvious cause, as in this came from a COVID positive individual. So that speaks volumes to how prevention can really keep you at minimal risk if you're abiding by all the recommendations.
And when the N9, who's our next speaker, comes up, we're going to talk about the facilities on base that are opening and the access that we're allowing to those things. But as we've stepped through that over the last few weeks, we've had very strict policies on cleaning and contact, on distancing, and those are bearing out. And as Doc's talking about, we do those things to manage the risk as we open those. So why do we have to clean the gym so frequently? I mean, you just talked about droplets and contact surfaces. Why is the gym such a bad, sorry, bad's the wrong word, a higher risk transmission area? Why do we have too much caution there?
Yes, sir. High volume, high use, lot of contact areas, lot of surface contact areas, and a lot of sweat, lot of breathing. Increased respiratory rate when you're exercising ultimately results in more air movement, particularly through a respiratory tract. Recent data has suggested that asymptomatic transmission or asymptomatic infection carries about the same viral load in your body as someone that manifests symptoms. So in the event that we have someone exposed to COVID who has the infection but doesn't know it because they're not experiencing anything, they could be breathing a whole bunch or coughing a whole bunch of virus into the area. And so, yes, sir.
Yeah, now that exact reason is why we're still limiting the gatherings, the sports activities, the team events. All that stuff is off limits right now until we are in a better situation because of that transmission vector we just talked about.
Yes, sir. And the most effective way to prevent that is routine cleaning, particularly after use from waves of individuals. And we're doing exactly that at the gym.
Okay, super. How about some things we've observed about mask wearing? What are some things that folks maybe have kind of let slip a little bit that we need to tighten up?
Yes, sir. Kind of what we just talked about, transmission routes, nose and mouth, the mask needs to cover both. And so we've seen a lot of this, a lot of this tucking under the chin when the right people aren't looking. And so this has got to be kind of a universal thing all the time and the proper wear tucked over the chin or tucked over the nose, under the chin, fitting snugly. For instance, in the medical clinic, we wear masks inside at all times just to prevent any possibility of transmission to the maximum extent we can. That would be a suggestion for any in-person movement unless we're able to maintain a safe distance like we are. But in order for masks to work properly, they have to be worn correctly. And so just attention to that is key in order for us to kind of continue to do well against this virus.
Yeah, and with the exception of these types of recordings, you know, all of our staff meetings here are done, the ones that are done in person are done wearing masks even when in excess of six feet, just as a precaution. So we've got that laid in as well. One of the things you mentioned earlier, the out in town, is those higher risk things like bars, restaurants, movie theaters are starting to open up. So first, for those in uniform, we're still in HBCon Charlie. And because we're still in health protection condition Charlie, that Page 13 that restricts access to those things, even if they're open out in town, that order still applies as well as NAFAC Order Number 6 that reiterates that. So that guidance is out there, even if locally things like that become available for the military, it's off limits. For the families and DOD civilians that are watching, it's requested that you abide by that for the health and safety of us all. We're trying to get all that facilities open up on base where I can control the problem. And Mr. Shouten and I are going to talk about the theater here shortly. But when we get into theater, what kind of concerns are you worried about as we think about opening that up? What would be the biggest thing we would need to cover down on from a risk perspective?
Yes, sir. A lot of the things we've been doing in all of our spaces, one of the keys would be limiting the amount of personnel within a closed space. Over to you and a discussion amongst us with the proper number with Dennis. But ultimately separated by six feet in every direction and then limited quantity going forward with sanitation measures in place as well before and after movies.
Yeah, so those facilities that have opened up since our last Town Hall, like the Subway that opened up Monday, the Take 5 that's opening up very soon. You know, we're setting in some kind of one in, one out type or two in, two out, limiting the number, the capacity that are inside each facility, as we've done for the gym. You know, it's operating at less than 25% capacity to manage that problem. We're going to have the same type of mindset as we get to considering the theater. And then we're looking at outdoor religious services as well. The chaplain and I are talking about that. When the temperature comes down a bit, I think we're ready to move on that to offer that service in the not too distant future. You know, and that outdoors obviously manages the problem quite a bit better than indoors.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else from your point of view that we need to...
That's all, sir. I think we're doing well on base and let's hope we can continue.
Thanks for everything your team has done. And all your folks that were out there supporting Mercy, are they back aboard now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, super. Well, thanks for your team for doing that and reaching out and supporting and supporting the, uh, the community in time and need.
Appreciate it, Skipper.
All right, take care. All right, next on deck is our MWR director, Mr. Dennis Shouten. Now, he's going to, uh, swap out with, with Doc. Um, while he's, uh, doing the cleaning, I'm going to talk, uh, one public service announcement, um, about those of you with, with, uh, with CAT cards. Um, so if you have a, an ID card that's expiring and you're an active duty service member and it expires before the thirtieth of October, so within the next week or so, um, you got to get that renewed. Uh, services will shut off, you'll lose access to, um, certain things electronically, some of the things that are, they're tied to your certificates that are on your card, uh, which also includes our electronic screening at the gate. That will cease to function if your card expires. So you got to get that renewed, um, if it expires, uh, by thirty September. Our Deers office has expanded their hours to support that. Uh, priority is given to those with expiring cards. You do need to make an appointment. You can do that either by calling the number or going to the Rapid Deers website. That's Rapid Deers website, or just Google DOD CAT card, it'll, it'll take you to the right place. Uh, so make an appointment, they'll get you taken care of. Now, if you're after thirty, so let's say your card doesn't expire till November, uh, those policies are in place to extend that. So they just ran into a problem with a thirty September, um, expiration date that you have to take care of. Okay, so any questions on that? Uh, reach out to your chain of command or your sponsor, uh, and we'll get those questions answered. Uh, joining me now is, uh, is Mr. Dennis Shouten, uh, our MWR director, and we're going to talk about what's going on, uh, with the facilities that we're reopening and kind of what we're looking to, to the future. So thanks for joining us again.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. So I have a quick, uh, N9 update as far as the facilities, and we'll get into, uh, October, specifically Halloween. So, uh, a quick rundown on the facilities. So CYP is open for mission essential personnel. GALLI is open for active duty, uh, first responders and other designated, uh, personnel. Fitness centers, active duty. Large pool for lap swim is active duty. The Liberty Center is always active duty. That's open. Uh, we have the Auto Hobby Shop, which is open for active duty. This week, we just expanded the hours of Kingpin. So we're back to regular hours, but still COVID conditioned. So the hours are eleven to twenty-two hundred Monday through Saturday and twelve to twenty-two hundred on Sundays.
So a lot of data Dennis just threw out there. We publish a, a graphic periodically on Facebook, a green, yellow, red, shows you what's open, what the hours are as they amend. So just keep watching our Facebook for that, uh, that to be pushed out. I also push that out, uh, frequently to your, uh, command and tenant leadership. So I got to work top-down that, that way as well.
Especially with the warm weather, uh, family pools open for active duty and, uh, active duty military families that live on base. Um, Monday, this coming up Monday, the twenty-first of September, Take Five will be open at seven o'clock in the morning. Uh, service will be by curbside pickup or takeout inside the facility. The people going in the facility will be limited because of COVID. We all understand that now. Uh, but that's opening Monday. Then early October, we'll open up the theater. So we'll talk that a little bit. Uh, but that also brings us up to Halloween towards the end of October.
Yeah, before we get into Halloween, if I could just kind of cover a few things. Um, so a lot of the food and services that, that Dennis mentioned are, are still takeout only, like the GALLI. We're not here for dining in yet, um, and, uh, that's, that's going to be something, uh, down in the future. So all, all those things will remain takeout only. Uh, for those services that are active duty only right now, um, I'll expand them when I can. Uh, we're not there yet. It's going to be sometime in the future. We'll let you know when those are expanding to additional patrons. Um, so some are specified for active duty only to manage the risk of transmission, to allow us to keep doing our mission. And I know that may get frustrating a little bit, but, but that's where we are to be able to continue our mission continuity. And I ask your patience, uh, as we work through that. Um, and finally, on the, on the large pool, normally we close that down by this time of year. What are we thinking for the large pool?
Well, uh, two things. Uh, the main thing is the water temperature. The, once it reaches sixty-five, we're mandated to, to close the facility. Uh, we also look at the patronage, you know? Uh, we want to keep that facility open as long as we can. So people that are lap swimmers, keep using the facility. If it drops off before the water gets down to sixty-five, then I'll need to approach Captain Perkins and probably request closure. But I don't want to do that. I'd rather have it open until we really have to close it.
Yeah, so we're going to keep it open as long as it makes sense, uh, and then we're not going to, just going to pick a, a date on the calendar and, and target that. So there'd be demand signal, uh, or temperature as the two drivers for that. Okay. So Halloween, so we got a lot coming on. I, I'm tired of letting, uh, particular, um, calendar events pass us by with maybe just a picture and a notification on Facebook. So, so we're going to try to get back into some semblance of normal for future holidays, uh, Halloween, Thanksgiving, and into the winter season. So we'll start with Halloween. What do you got on the plate for the families and, and base patronage?
All right, sir. So for Friday, the thirtieth, uh, we, we'll have a drive-through haunted house in the RV park.
Sound of Freedom. I mentioned Mission Operations. Uh, the base is still running and the airfield's still running, and I appreciate everyone pulling, uh, to keep that happening. So that was an F-18 breaking overhead.
So the, uh, drive-through haunted house will have a Friday, the thirteenth theme. Y'all remember Jason. Uh, we'll probably have a couple of Jasons out there. You, you remember from the movie, he does have an axe to grind. So if you see one, you may not see the other one coming up on you. So careful. Uh, you'll also probably see Freddy Krueger. Uh, he's going to be out and about. Um, but a lot of those characters and the setup and all that are run by volunteers. We really need volunteers, uh, to, to the setup, to be the characters, to help out with the actual drive-through part and to help break down that night. Um, you know, because I have to bring a prop here. These volunteers, they do lend a hand.
Yeah, I, I asked Dennis, uh, what can we do to lend a hand? So he, he brought his hand to show us. Um, so, so we got some great ideas out there. The team is really thinking about how do we engage our families in a COVID-safe environment, you know, with drive-throughs that limit the interaction. But it really only works if we get the volunteers that help build this thing and put it together. Um, so the MWR team's going to be reaching out and, and I really ask for, for your support, uh, to give back to our families, uh, there. Um, what do we got at the back end of the, uh, drive-through?
So at the, after the, um, uh, drive-through, we'll have a, I think you can twist my arm on this one, for a, uh, trunk or treat, uh, Halloween costume, kids costume, uh, contest, maybe some dogs or cats. Uh, we'll figure that one out, but, uh, that should be cool.
Okay, so we got some additional information coming out about what the, uh, what the schedule events are going to look like. Uh, but we are after, uh, recognizing, uh, our best and most, uh, outrageous costumes, uh, at different, uh, age groups. We'll figure out how we do that. Uh, we're all going to have a trunk or treat. Uh, and again, we're keeping everything COVID-safe, so we're still working the mechanics of how, how we implement that. Um, and then I've talked to Lincoln Housing as well. We're going to do a drive-through, Lincoln Leadership and myself, and we're going to take a look at what those best houses that are, they got the best decorations out there, and we'll find some way to recognize those, those families for their, uh, their holiday spirit as well.
I think you're a judge for that.
I think I know some folks. Yeah. Okay. Uh, and then looking forward into, into the, uh, Thanksgiving and the, and the hot winter season, uh, we're going to be doing similar things like this. So we're going to be asking for the, for volunteers to help us celebrate those events, uh, in a COVID-friendly environment, which requires, uh, in some ways a little bit more support than normal as we build up these safety precautions, but yet find something that stimulates and, and engages our, our families and, and their children. So I appreciate your team, uh, working on all these things.
You're welcome, sir. That's fine.
What else you got on your plate?
Uh, that's it for right now as far as the, the update. More to come in the next town hall.
So many of, uh, many of the folks out there may notice that, uh, you know, MWR, uh, mostly back at work now as we've got most of their facilities open to some extent. Uh, their teams, uh, their workforce has been doing a lot of training, a lot of, uh, readapting to the new procedures, some pretty strict rules we've got laid in to protect the workforce, to protect the patrons. So you guys, your team's done very, very well adapting to those, and I thank every one of you for that. And I thank all of you out there for everything you've done, uh, keep, keeping us operationally focused, executing mission, uh, as we, uh, as we've been dealing with COVID now for, for six months. So, uh, I think it's, uh, we're, we're nearing on what the new normal's going to look like. Um, I ask your families to, uh, to be safe. Uh, contact us if you've got any questions about anything that was, um, that was brought up today. I don't think we have any live questions. I'm not getting the signal from the back. Uh, we didn't get any advance. They're going to give me one last check to see if a, a live question popped in.
Yes, sir, we have one.
Okay, what do we got?
Sir, we have one, and it was a question about how do they do curbside pickup for the Take Five? What is the procedure for ordering a coffee? Do they just call it? Or is there some other way they should order their, uh, food beverage?
I can talk to that. So there's, uh, two phone numbers available. Uh, they're out both on email and on the flyer, but you call one of the numbers, you place your order, the, uh, Take Five person will give the caller a curbside number. We have numbered spaces in the back of the...
So an assigned parking spot?
Assigned parking, one through five. So let's say you're number two. So you call it in, you drive around the back, park in number two. We're going to have a runner going from the store outside, back and forth. And there's also the phone numbers again on the parking sign that when you pull up, you can call if the runner, it, it does not happen to be out there at the time. So, uh, it's easy enough.
So we'll get those phone numbers posted in the comments section right here down below, uh, and, uh, and then, and we'll get that information out of a variety of mechanisms. So that's kicking off next Monday, uh, just like you do out in town. If you go to Starbucks, you get that curbside delivery, same, same type of model. Uh, we'll also have, if you don't want a curbside to your car, you, you'll have the ability to walk in, queue up outside in your six-foot spacing. There'll be designated slots for that, uh, and then kind of two in, two out as we rotate through that to minimize, uh, the folks inside the store. But it should be pretty, uh, pretty straightforward when you get there.
Seven o'clock Monday.
Seven o'clock Monday.
We just got another pop-in question. Would it be possible to have a menu of available options for Take Five? Can we post a menu?
Yes, it is posted already. It's on the, uh, MWR website. Um, and if not already, it'll be sent out to all El Centro email with the menu attached.
Is it also on the app?
It is.
Okay, so what would that app be? What's the name of that app that people can download?
It's called the Acuity app. Um, I, I forgot the actual URL.
Is it the dine on the go or the Acuity? Okay, so it's different. So the Kingpin's on the dine on the go and they Take Five, and most of the other appointment-based things that we have, uh, opened up, um, for COVID run through the Acuity app. And...
So that's the Navy Life Estevia El Centro?
Correct.
Okay, so anybody just needs to go to their app store, whether it's Apple or Google, and download Navy Life Estevia El Centro?
Correct.
Now, just let me be clear on this because I'm, I'm a little bit uncertain. The menu is posted on the app. Can we make orders through the app for Take Five yet?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's a coming feature. We're not quite ready yet. So right now, it's a walk-in and order or, or call-in and order. Uh, and then coming soon will be an ability to preorder through the app.
Correct. Yeah, it'll be through a separate dine on the go app.
Okay.
Which is the, the same app that we use for Kingpin.
Okay, so it will, when, when it's time to be able to order, it'll migrate to something similar to Kingpin. Okay.
Okay, got another one that just came in?
Absolutely.
Um, when will retirees be allowed back to the RV park?
Sure. So, uh, I mentioned that, uh, we're stepping through stages of reopening very slowly, very carefully, uh, and we're staying with active duty only for many of the higher risk areas that Doc and I discussed. Um, when, I, I don't know, is the, is the, is the actual answer. Uh, the, it's going to be informed by the state of the country, uh, the, the COVID environment throughout the state, um, and then, um, and then, and then when we're, when we're ready to move on that, uh, locally. Uh, it, access to recreational-type facilities like that will be at the back end, the kind of the last stage of where we are in decoupling and reopening, rather. Um, and we're still in the early stages of that. So I can't give you a date. Uh, I, I can tell you that we are aware that there's a demand signal for that, um, and we're still managing, uh, the risk to our folks here. So right now, that is not something that's a near-term program.
Okay, we have another one pops in. What can the community outside do to help us?
Ah, great question. So I was actually out at the town, town, city of El Centro Town Council last night, and I said, um, I, I, we discussed where we are on the base and the kind of things that are going on. What folks have done, that Doc talked about, there's individual health precautions and the, um, the departmental, the daily screening you do at every building you walk into, including our quarter neck here, and every hangar you walk into and every place you go to, that Dennis has opened, the gym and the screening and the, you know, pools and things like that. If we follow those procedures and don't[1737.62]